Good afternoon. It's 4 o'clock on Tuesday, May 17, 2022. And we're going to call the Board meeting of the Bay County Board of Commissioners. Could you take the roll, please?
Fox.
Here, Krieger.
Yes.
Begic.
Here.
Here.
Ratty, here. Johnson.
Here.
Herrick.
Here. Please stand for the invocation, followed by the pledge of allegiance.
Lord, we ask that you grant this Board of Commissioners and all those in authority the patience and understanding to work together for the good of all people. In your holy name we ask this. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So, first order of business is to administer from 4:12:22, 4:19:22, and 5:33:22.
Support.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next, citizen input. If there's anyone in the audience who'd like to come forward and address the commission, please step forward, sign your name, and speak away. Okay. Seeing no one, we'll move on to petitions and communications. Number one, Region Seven Area Agency on Aging. Bob Brown, the executive director, an update on the programs and projects.
I think it's still good afternoon. Good afternoon. As was announced, I'm Bob Brown, and the executive director of Region Seven Area Agency on Aging. I've been there the last past five years. I'm here today to talk about that, give the update on the agency and some of the programs that we're working on. So I get asked a lot of times what a AAA is. And a AAA is basically the overseer, the state pass through, federal pass through for the Older Americans Act and the Older Michiganians Act. I get asked a lot of times, why not deal with the local council on aging or department on aging? Under the guidelines, demographics in the 10 counties that Region Seven serves, all the way from the lake to 127, the demographics aren't big enough. Even if you took Bay, Saginaw, Midland, you wouldn't have quite enough to cover the demographics that are required under the Americans Act. Hence, you have an agency, you had 10 counties and a city, Saginaw, City of Saginaw, get together and form governance in a body to do that and apply for the Area Agency on Aging on behalf of that region. They call it a planning service area. And that's our planning service area under the Older Americans Act. And as a AAA Area Agency on Aging, I always like to throw out there, by the way, we're that agency that don't charge you for the services, unlike the insurance company. Anyways, besides being a AAA, we're also a 1915C waiver. That's home and community-based services. It's more of a Medicaid program that we run, again, through the feds, through the state, and us. We also run a PACE out in the Thumb Area. That's a program for all inclusive care to the elderly. One day, we hope to bring it here to Bay City and things like that. But everything you're building takes time. We also do MAP. That's a big program. You might ask me what MAP is, but that's Medicare/Medicaid Assistance Program. So we help folks navigate during that open enrollment period. I'm sure you all seen the ad with Joe Namath. When you call, you get an insurance agent. If you call Region Seven, on the other hand, you'll get an unbiased consultant that's well-trained to answer all your questions in your best interest or your client's best interest. Navigate that versus guiding you to a certain insurance company. So we might all love a certain insurance company, but they're not going to tell you about the other programs. We're going to tell you about all of them. We're also going to look at your drug formulary, which is usually the most expensive part, the highest add-on, highest cost to people. And we've got experts that can guide through that based on what your prescriptions are and what drug formularies are out there and available. Last year, I'm very proud to say we won the outstanding award three out of four quarters. And we saved $2.5 million for our residents, including residents in Bay County. It's an awesome program. The other question is, why can't people deal directly with the state? Why don't we have the state do this and deal directly with them? Well, I would just briefly say, be careful of what you wish for. For one, if you did take over and do these, you'd be limited on the direct services. So you guys are awesome at making meals, delivering meals, providing services. You're restricted from doing those direct services if you become a AAA. If the state, people could elect to work directly with the state, therein you have the admin of the state versus my admin, which is 5%. So you get 95% of the dollars. And we do a service of the auditing, managing, overseeing the funds to make sure they're spent right. We also give the technical assistance so people don't get caught like we did with all the dollars in the pandemic and all that. You guys are probably going through a lot of bureaucratic stuff to make sure you're appropriating money right, right? You might even be hiring consultants. Well, to the local councils on aging and departments on aging and/or community action agencies, whoever we work with, we're the technical consultant, and we're a lot cheaper than those consultants. So, again, 95 cents from the state to you through us. The other thing I'd like to talk about is, I'm supposed to give a fiscal report. I'd be a mess. You appoint Pat Beeson as our treasurer. Trust me, he's very conscious of the costs and the money and the bottom line. And with that, he also reviews our audits. So our audits for the last five years that I've been here have been what they call unmodified, which I guess is the highest one you can get. So for five years in a row. And I'm sure you all know about management letters. So we have had no recommendations or findings in five years. So we run a pretty tight ship, and we've got a great fiscal department to make sure the money is handled right. Not to mention, I think I have some of the best, barring the Department on Aging of Bay County, we have some of the best people helping our seniors. So with that and that fiscal thing in your packet, besides a lot of great information about us, I always like to come back because you invest in us. Bay County invests $6,500. Well, between all the services plus the pass-through money that we give directly to your agency, we return over $5 million for that investment to the seniors, the disabled, and the veterans of this county. That's a remarkable return on investment. It's still, I don't know any other program that still exists federally like this one. And it's been my privilege for the last five years to serve as the executive director of your Region Seven Area Agency on Aging. The other thing I'd like to briefly, if I may, Mr. Chairman, I know you're dealing with ARPA. That's all good. I put some papers in there about a program we are proposing to Bay County. And I can either go through it, or you could read it, ask me to come back. It's there. It's a housing project. It would cost somewhere between $100,000 and $200,000 per unit, but those folks would be living in what I would call a true home environment, at which they deserve. Anyways, it would be a veterans' living services. I would say, we're looking to invest in Wayne County if you want to do that program. I'm not asking for money. I'm telling you, I'm willing to invest. Pat's here to say, we're willing to invest money in the county directly. One or two million dollars towards this program if we can get the counter. So we've got that going. We've got three things on the shelves, one in Bat Act, one here in Bay County, and Saginaw has reached out to us, hearing us talk about it. I will tell you that we sheltered 30 of our clients in one particular assisted living facility, and housing is the biggest issue that I see facing our seniors. And it shut down overnight. 55 units gone, off the market. Are people building senior living facilities? Yes. I would challenge you to see if the word affordable is in that vocabulary. So what we're proposing is not a free residency, but what they call affordable assisted living, which is a state program. And that's what we need more of. And we need a quality of life that folks that have lived their whole life in Bay County say deserve. The other thing is, with the veterans, we're hoping that we can get other funds. The other thing Region Seven is committed to, if Bay County wants to build such a facility, is to allow your veterans department do the assessments to who lives there, and then we take care of them for you. But we're also bringing the ongoing sustainability of our agency and the excess Medicaid dollars we're willing to reinvest in Bay County. That's my spiel. I appreciate the time. I can't afford a lot of marketing out there because if I did, that'd be one less meal I'd serve somebody. So we do very little advertise. We do some, but we kind of keep it down. If there's any questions.
Any questions for anyone? Mr. Barsh.
I don't have a question. I just make a comment. Bob, thank you for the great job you're doing and also for acknowledging all the great work that
Oh, absolutely.
that Beth Urick and the dedicated staff of the Department on Aging perform each and every day for our senior and homebound residents in Bay County, which we have, you know, many of in terms of our percentage. But you're doing a great job, and we appreciate the return on the investment in terms of what impact you're having on our 60 and better population of Bay County. So, thank you.
Well, I will just comment back. Your staff is stellar. And I'll leave it with that word. Usually I use awesome, but they're stellar. When we do audits and things and come in, it's just spectacular.
Thank you for the packet. I think the commissioners will have time to, there's a lot in there, a lot in there to absorb it, you know, right now. So, but they'll have time to look through it and read it and see everything that's involved. A lot of things we don't know about, I'm sure. Thank you so much.
And I would just say, the most important number is at the bottom of that table, 784% return on your investment.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
I want to thank the board for appointing two outstanding members, Mel McNally and Patrick Beeson, to your Area Agency on Aging. And, you know, when I served in Congress and represented 10 counties, had regular contact, and I think probably both of you might, how long have you guys been on the board? It's been quite a while. Because I think, Pat, you were on the board then?
17 years.
Yeah, 17. So, but anyway, they
No, it's actually on our advisory council, which is the board that is actually mandated by the Older Americans Act. And I will tell you, he comes monthly to give a report on all the meal sites to Region Seven. So he does a lot of visiting.
Bay County is well-represented. Thank you, Bob.
Thank you.
One other thing I'd like to add, but Bay County serves the most meals in all 10 of our counties. Bay County is number one. Your meal site and delivery is top notch, I'll tell you. We take care of our people in Bay County, and that's great. Your staff here is doing a tremendous job to make sure that our people are fed. If somebody's hungry, we're going to feed them.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Need a motion received?
The region, we have, there's 10 counties, and our program, we have more programs in Bay County than any of the other counties.
We're the best people. We're the best people running this stuff. So, that's a fact. Need a motion received?
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next up is Francis DeWise, an application for appointment to the vacant seat on the Department of Health and Human Services Board of Directors. Need a motion to receive that application?
Some will support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. Now, just as a, just a point here, we can't make the appointment because there's a question because she serves in another capacity, and so the attorney's going to go through it. And so we receive, we receive the application, and barring any unforeseen circumstances, she'll be appointed at the next meeting. Okay? Just so you know. Okay. To the Ways and Means, Commissioner Fox.
Yes. Resolution 2022-100, purchase of the four vehicles with Sheriff Department. I move that resolution.
Support. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Resolution number 2022-101, purchase of the marine boat for the Sheriff Department. I move that resolution.
Support. Discussion. Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Resolution number 2022-102, the Pink Hunting Area School Resource Officer Agreement. I move that resolution.
Support. As a matter of discussion, did we put a number on that yet or no? No? Is there, do you know, is there a number for it, a price, what it would cost? Does anyone know?
When they broke for summer, I don't think we have an actual price. I think it's been like $15,000 or $20,000 a year. They're just dividing that between Pink Hunting and then Linwood for that campus, but they don't know usually until it gets a little bit closer to the school year. They want to renew it. They know that, and they said it should be about the same as what it was last year.
Ma'am, do we need to put a price on there? Or what do we have to do?
You're going to have to approve the actual agreement that comes up. So yes, there should be a price that's included in the resolution so you know what the budget adjustment is. So you could put up to $20,000. If it's less than that, then it's covered.
Have you heard any numbers? I want to say that's, I mean, it's been fascinating. It's between 15 and 20, but they usually don't let us know until they get a little bit closer to the school year.
Soon as we go, we just, we just, help me out here.
Not to exceed, not to exceed, not to exceed $20,000.
Is that's our amendment to the resolution, right? Correct?
Yes.
Okay. Sound good to everyone?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Okay. Resolution 2022-103, the Victim of Crimes Act Grant. I move that resolution.
Support. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Resolution 2022-104, the Crime Victims Rights Grant Agreement. I move that resolution. Support.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Resolution 2022-105, the Household Assistance Program, ARPA funds. I move that resolution.
Support. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Resolution 2022-106, the Labatory Services Agreement with National Testing Systems. I move that resolution.
Support. Discussion. Commissioner Conan.
Well, just for us, maybe Shawna, you can give us another explanation on, is the city going to administer it? We're just going to give them the money, or how's that?
No, we would administer our own program. We have a meeting set up with the city this week to talk about their program and to learn from their process. We had an internal organizational meeting with Laura Ogar, who will be taking the lead, working with Weston Prince in the Treasurer's Office, as well as finance staff to set up and administer the program. But we will likely share resources, so we'll advertise for each other, which we've been in the Treasurer's Office advertising for the city of Bay City for their housing assistance program. We also talked about targeting the delinquent tax issue. So we currently hold all the forfeiture data to address the people who will be facing foreclosure for next year. So we've got a great start, and we'll keep working on that program.
Anyone else? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
So, question. Did I not move Resolution 106?
It's next.
Did we move it?
I thought I did, but
Yeah.
Yep.
I did.
Yes.
Yep.
So that's what we just voted for?
Right.
Yes.
Okay.
We were just discussing the 105.
Right.
Yes.
Catch up, would you?
I would do the same thing.
You're confusing me.
I thought we just did 105.
No, no, no. Okay.
My fault.
Resolution number 2022-107, letter of intent with the Region Seven Area Aging, Area Agency on Aging. I move that resolution.
Support. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Resolution 2022-108, general fund payables. I move that resolution.
Support. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Resolution 2022-109, Veteran Services Coordinator Contract with Leonard Norman. I move that resolution.
Support. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Resolution number 2022-110, ARPA administrative costs. I move that resolution.
Support. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Back to you.
Hey, thank you. Next, we'll hear from Commissioner Johnson from the Personnel and Human Services.
All right. Thank you, sir. We'll start with Resolution number 2022-111, Bay County Audit, F-65 Audit from the Finance Officer. I move this resolution.
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Resolution number 2022-112, Kindergarten Dental Assessment Services Agreement with the Health Department. I move this resolution.
Support. Discussion. Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
All right. And Resolution number 2022-113, vacancies at 911 Central Dispatch, Buildings and Grounds, Department on Aging, and also a new position for the Deputy Health Officer. I move this resolution.
Support.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
That's all I have for now, sir.
Thank you. Commissioner Johnson, next, from the Board of Commissioners, Commissioner Begic.
Yes. Resolution 2022-114, Report of County Executive. Move to receive the report.
Move this resolution. Yeah. We want to get support.
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Resolution 2022-115, Amendment to Michigan No-Fault Auto Insurance Reform Act of 2019. I move that resolution.
Support. Discussion. I'm just, I'm going to say something. I got a letter today from, we all did, from Mrs. Tacy. And I remember this, I remember this well because, well, Jean was, daughter, and her son, you know, was in a pretty bad accident, you know, some years ago. And he's made, he's recovered as far as, he's done well. You know, he's out in California, and he's working hard. But, you know, without, the point of her letter was that if they move this law the way they want to, they don't know where they'll end up, you know? Because I think there's some times that he still needs a little help in it once in a while. I'm not sure. But her letter was very moving. At, you know, anybody, when you argue, you guys will see it. I just, it just came this morning. But it's a great, it's a great letter, and it was written from the heart. It almost brings tears to your eyes when you read it because they went through a lot, you know, like we all would do for our own child. And this, I think this, whatever happened when they, when they amended this, when they did this no-fault thing, or they did it with the care, I think some things happened that weren't intended, but now we got to try to fix them. And I think this is the way to do it. And I want to, and she's watching, I just want to thank her for that great letter. And like I said, I've known that family for a lot of years, and I follow them pretty closely, and they've been through a lot, you know? Anybody who had that kind of catastrophic accident would be, it'd be subject to. But thank you again, Ms. Tacy and your whole family. We wish you well. Commissioner Begic, you're next.
I know of another case also. I think it was either Representative Senator Howell from Shields Saginaw area, his son was injured on a trip down the highway, and he's been back to school and stuff. The other point I have is that I have a daughter-in-law who's an occupational therapist, and the fees they pay are not, you know, not equivalent with what most occupational therapists and physical therapists make. I think what happened is that they had an open-ended policy where whatever you charged, they would pay. That didn't work all too good. So I think that's where they need to make the correction and maybe go out for business or have it, have it not open-ended, but somewhere better than what it is now. And I did talk to Mac several times about this, and they have not taken a position on it. And so they're, they're not opposed to it going through.
Thank you. Mr. Barsh.
Yeah. Mr. Chairman, I want to thank you for mentioning the email we all received regarding Sharon Wizdala, Tacy's son. And that's not a unique situation. Thousands, tens of thousands of people across Michigan have been impacted the same way. And I, and I'm sure, I think I've read, a majority of people have continued their unlimited medical PIP coverage under the insurance after this reform. The problem is, the reimbursements rates have been cut 40%. And these providers are not going to be able to sustain that care. They're going to close their doors, and we're not going to get the quality of care that a lot of people would like to have. I know that insurance rates were high, and this was an attempt, I think, to try to lower the insurance rates statewide and especially in southeast Michigan. But I'm familiar, this was an issue in the legislature for 30 years. And so I think, I think I agree with all of the people who have provided input here to the board and to us about the need for adjusting this coverage. And so I want to thank those who have appeared before the board, as well as Sharon, for communicating and the board, if you should adopt this resolution. It's something that I think should be done. And I think the legislature did make a mistake when they passed dispersion of the reform. So that's all I can say.
This is, if you guys don't like this, you can tell me. But you guys, if you folks, if you want, is there anything you want to say? Because we're going to board on this. You know, I see you guys here, you know, it looks like most people will be in favor of this, you know?
Well, I just, my name's Nick Rock. I live in Essex, though. I run a home care company out of Essex, though. We cover the whole state. We provide care, in-home care to individuals with spinal vertebrae like myself that were now on my accident. So we've done that for 10 years, and we want to continue doing that. But the law that changed in 2019 destroyed that. We will own a lot of businesses if they don't change. I know this isn't really a county issue. It's a state issue, but we've been beating that against the law in Lansing since, I mean, I'll be back tomorrow. Lansing trying to change. So we certainly appreciate that the board is willing to look at this and put this forward to the state so that they can recognize that this is an issue. This is definitely an issue that, it's a statewide issue, but it will affect us globally. There's a lot of us business owners that have continued to provide care at a significant loss, but that alone lasts a while. I constantly spend my evenings looking at the road to figure out how long I can survive. So it's not just a care issue. That's the most important thing, is that people with catastrophic injuries continue to get care. It's also a business issue. It's a job issue. I mean, I just look at how long I can continue. We're a small company. We have about 100 employees, but I have to look at how long we can continue providing care at a significant cost. So from my perspective, from somebody that's a local here, I appreciate that the board is willing to look at this and support this. We need to get the message up to the state to make sure they, you know, do something. Every representative I talk to says they agree that it was an error, and they want to fix it. And because of partisan politics, they are willing to bring forward a bill. We've had six different bills over the last two years, and none of them come out of committee. So I appreciate everybody's willingness to support us in this and physically in our office. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, let's do it. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Good job.
Resolution number 2022-116, Ratification of Collective Bargaining Agreements. Move that resolution.
Support. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Resolution 2022-117. Now I see, I don't know if that is a change, or is it the same as what's
No, it's revised to include grant awards on the year. We'd like to include grant awards when we hear.
Different version here, but still the same number. Do I move that resolution?
Support.
Mary Jo Brand, could you step forward, please? I think everyone would agree, you folks have done a wonderful job. I know where we were about 10 years ago, so, you know, I don't know, but I saw the new board out there, it looks great. Tell us a little bit about what's going to go on now. You got like $106,000 now with the two grants. So, give the Commissioners just a little bit of a rundown on the folks at home, so they know what's going to go on at the fairgrounds.
So, our goal is, we currently have a practice arena that really we need to move and relocate it next to the show arena, better logistics for the horse shows, and we're also going to tear down that old turnout. And we're going to build a large barn, which actually we can utilize, take the stalls out and use it for larger area, whatever, but it's going to be 40 new stalls. Our goal is, we'd like to be able to offer an area to host additional horse shows, larger horse shows, which we can't currently do. And we want to make the facility safer, adding fencing off. And actually, we're going to actually then combine our fence to this mosquito control when they put their new fence in, so we'll be able to keep a, make a safer area. So, I'm a bit excited about it.
You guys are doing great work out there. Thank you. It's coming back alive, I guess. Anybody else got comments, or we good? Good? Okay. Thank you so much.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Good job. All in favor?
Aye.
Close, motion carries.
I believe that's all I have.
That's it? All right. Reports of the County Executive.
I'll be brief, since I've spoken quite a bit at the board meetings, so. I met with Karen Coronado from Spectrum about the broadband build-out in Bay County, and it was very informative, and they're sort of on the cutting edge in terms of already identifying some of the underserved and unserved areas in Bay County, a large portion of which are in Commissioner Fox's district. And I indicated to her that I'd like to, if Deanna and the Chair and the Board is amenable to have her make a presentation at some point in the future. As you know, I mentioned, we're waiting for the Commission on High-Speed Internet in Lansing, they're going to, in the state of Michigan, they're going to do 66,000 miles of basically needs assessment, including all AD3 counties, and we'll inform the sheriff and the county when they get to Bay County. And this is laying groundwork for hopefully utilizing some of that federal money in both the infrastructure bill that passed Congress, as well as through the Department of Agriculture, the $1 billion that Michigan has for high-speed internet and broadband expansion. So, if the Board's amenable, I think it'd be good to have her come in and make a presentation. I found it very helpful and informative, and I think all of you would as well. That's all I really have. Thanks.
Thank you. Next, the Finance Officer, Bay County American Rescue Plan Act Funding Allocation Report. Need a motion to receive that, is it in the packet?
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Close, motion carries. Is there any unfinished business? Any new business? Commissioner Begic.
A quick question.
Go ahead.
About the pool, any decision yet? Don't put you on the spot, but have you made a decision on the pool opening or not opening?
We are working on the pool. Steve is still working really hard to get it open and get it filled. We, if anyone's listening at home and in their certified lifeguard, we are still looking for lifeguard applicants, we do not have many, and we need at least 12 certified lifeguards to open for public swim. So, we're actively reaching out to people in the swim community to see if we can find some certified lifeguards to make sure that we have enough to be safe. So, it's still being worked on. Our guys are working really hard on it right now.
Thank you.
Any other, what was that, those new businesses? Any other new business? Miscellaneous. I have a miscellaneous, so today, hopefully, like I said, it's in the emails today, a letter from Bay Metro Transit concerning the bridges. That was in the email today, and then attached was a letter that, if you didn't see, I can read it, and then you guys can make a comment, and they want this to go to the United Bridge Partners, because it's about Bay Metro and paying fees to cross the river and, you know, going toll-free, basically. So, this is a letter that came with, and they asked me if I would say it was a good letter. It says, "Dear Mr. Michelle, on behalf of the Bay County Board of Commissioners, I'd like to extend this letter of support for Bay Metro Transit's efforts to seek an exclusion from tolls for the use of liberty and independence bridges. As Commission Chair, I'm responsible for appointing members to the Bay Metro Transit Board of Directors. These board members have the responsibility to oversee and administer an economical and efficient transit service that is both safe and responsive to the needs of the county residents. While we understand two of the four bridges being toll bridges over the Saginaw River will not stop Bay Metro Transit from providing its essential services, it would have an excessive financial impact, as well as an impact on the quantity and availability of service in some areas of the county, particularly in the districts west of the Saginaw River. Bay Metro Transit is part of transportation infrastructure that needs to have full access to our county roads and bridges without financial burden of tolls. The Bay County Board of Commissioners is in full support of Bay Metro Transit's efforts to be excluded from tolls for the use of bridges in Bay City. The Bay County Board of Commissioners and the Bay Metro Transit have been partners in serving Bay County residents for almost 50 years. There should not be a cost to Bay Metro Transit as a result of this partnership, and the vital role it plays for our citizens. Sincerely, Tom Herrich, Chair and Board of Commissioners." Is everyone okay with that letter? Is that my question?
Yes.
Okay. So, I need a, do I need a motion to send this over? What am I going to do? Okay. So, we're going to send this to United Bridge Partners. Deanna will take care of that, and just so you know, that's going, and like I said, if you want to read all the other stuff that's with it, it's in, if you haven't seen it yet, it's in your email. Okay. That's all my miscellaneous announcements. Commissioner Begic, I know you got one.
Memorial Day will be on the 30th, Monday, May 30th, and there'll be services around the county. Should be something on M-Live or in the paper coming up. I know there's usually one here at 9 o'clock at the county building, VVA Memorial is usually